Out there in television land and the audience, welcome to a special meeting of the Town of Poughkeepsie Planning Board for this evening, August 16, 2016. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Two things before we start. I'd like to welcome Rich Spencer, Vice Chair, back to the meeting this evening. Yeah? We've missed him for a couple of months, but I'm sure he'll do something tonight that makes sure we maybe think better about next time.
He hasn't come back.
And secondly, I'd like to welcome Chloe Lucas to the meeting this evening. She's getting a lesson in civics. So, welcome Chloe. And first on the agenda, we have McDonald Heights Town Center Site Plan Scoping Document Discussion for a Proposed Mixed-Use Development Including 288 to 350 Residential Dwelling Units in Apartments and Townhouses. Eighty-five thousand to one-hundred-and-eighty thousand square feet of mixed commercial development, recreation area, and associated parking. Nine twenty-eight, nine thirty-two, nine thirty-five, and nine thirty-six. Duchess Turnpike, Duchess Turnpike in Victory Lane. Zone MCH, McDonald Heights Center, and IH Heavy Industry. Industrials, sixty-point-eight-seven acres. Type One Action Meadowview Properties LLC, Kirchhoff Properties LLC, and Industrial Retro LLC owners. This will be a discussion from the applicant. If you'd like to step up, maybe give us a brief overview. The only reason I'm asking for that is that we get a brief overview at this point is because this is on the record. This is the first meeting we've had on this project, so we should, for people watching at home, hear a little bit about what's going on. After that, we'll have a discussion. If they have any additional questions from the board or questions at this point, that's fine. And then we will schedule a public hearing, the first public hearing on this matter. I'll read the resolution into the record, and we'll schedule a public hearing for Thursday, September 22 at 6:00 PM in this room. So, with that, Rich?
Thank you very much. Richard Rang with Kirchhoff Companies. I'll be brief, and I'll speak slowly.
Do you have to turn that microphone on, that little one, or use the other?
Both. There we go. So, the application before you, as John just indicated, is a development within the McDonald Heights Town Center. It's a zoning designation that was assigned to the property in this area following the town's adoption of a comprehensive plan. The intent of the zoning is to promote a mixed-use, walkable community. We worked for many years trying to develop some commercial uses for the property and identify exactly how we wanted to develop it, and have recently presented an application to the town to be able to move forward with that. As John had indicated, you know, we have several residential units principally in rental condition, rental format, as well as, you know, several thousand square feet of commercial space on the property. We've secured some interest and are working to secure more definitive opportunity for some commercial users to be sighted on the property, inclusive of a daycare, spa, perhaps a medical office building and such. The project's going to consist on both sides of Route 44. We're obviously going to have some sort of a controlled intersection in that location. We're hoping to be able to do a roundabout, create sort of a Main Street kind of entrance onto both sides, line that with some small commercial users that'll appeal to a lot of the local businesses. We would anticipate some food service operations in the form of restaurants in that corridor. There'll be a couple of larger commercial buildings throughout the site as well for some specific uses. Once we've secured those specific uses, the site plan will be defined for those particular uses. Then we have the apartment complex, which is going to consist of at least a mix of some townhomes and some apartments, preferably in a three-story configuration. We're working on developing a more detailed site plan analysis and the architecture for those uses now. We believe the application is consistent with the underlying zone and meets the intent of the McDonald Heights Center District, and we're pretty excited about being able to bring it forward.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Joey, have anything you want to add at this point? I know it's early in the process.
I did participate in some meetings on the scope previously, and my comments are already incorporated in the draft, so I don't have anything further at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Neil, you want to say anything?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is sort of the kickoff, if you will, of the environmental review process. We are following a path that is authorized and secret, but unfortunately is little used. This is one that creates, I think, a true partnership between the applicant and the planning board in this case, whereby the applicant has requested that the town retain the consultant, in this case, VHB. My colleague Keith Solomon and his firm have been retained by the town to prepare the draft environmental impact statement. And what this requires is frankly a lot of transparency that we don't usually see, you know, in the EIS process. There's a lot of give and take. Has been a lot of give and take, will be a lot of give and take between the board and the applicant and staff. And we've had a number of meetings which have, staff-level meetings, which have led to tonight, development of a draft scope, which we discussed with the board at the workshop last meeting. And there were some revisions that came, that were made to the draft scope as a result of that conversation. But you also have a package in front of you that consists of a resolution that accepts the Part II and the Part III EAF that sort of launches us down the path of a POSDEC, which is the board's declaration of intent to prepare a draft environmental impact statement based, and that would be based on at least the, on the front end, the preliminary draft scope. The resolution would also set the public hearing or scoping session for September 22. We suspect that there will be enough public interest that we thought it prudent to set aside a special night for that meeting. That is not the board's regular meeting night. It's actually a week following. And coming away from that public hearing, there would be perhaps some additional revisions to the scope. It would be presented back to the board for ratification or acceptance in October, and perhaps some additional changes if the board members so feel. So, that's sort of the trajectory that we're on. Just want to turn it over briefly to Keith to kind of give you an overview on the scope itself. Yeah, yeah.
Hi, my name is Keith Solomon. I'm the Director of Energy and Environmental Services with VHB here in upstate New York, and we are fortunate to have been retained to prepare the environmental impact statement for this project. And essentially, what you have before you in the scoping document is the roadmap for how we will do and prepare that environmental impact statement. Basically, what we do is we take every potential possible impact and we study it. And essentially, what we do when we study an impact is we first describe what are the existing conditions. We then describe what would happen if there is no project. We then look at the potential impacts associated with the proposed project, and then we look at potential mitigation measures for those impacts. And we do that for every potential impact, like noise, like traffic, like land use, like recreation. We look at every single issue, and we do it a couple of different ways. We look at the construction-related impacts, which are one thing, and then we look at the impacts of what's the project going to be like once it's fully built out? What's the traffic going to be like then? So, traffic is a good example. You can have construction-related traffic impacts, and then you have your everyday impacts once the project is built, which gets to the point that Rich mentioned of how are we going to handle that intersection right on Route 44. So, I am anticipating doing a fairly comprehensive analysis of all of the impacts. When we get to the scoping session on the 22nd, I'm sure we'll hear from the public and be able to respond to some of their concerns, but this is just the roadmap for what we have to study. It's not the actual study itself, and you're putting this in motion tonight when you act on the resolution.
Thank you. Let me just go around the board. Maybe that'd be easier instead of everybody just jumping in. You want to start, Rocco?
Sure. I'm good at this point. There's nothing here. At this point, I'm fine.
Ed?
Any change from last Thursday's DEIS to today's?
We accommodated the comments that were made, and we incorporated the changes that were discussed. Yes.
I'll review it and get back to you.
Rich, anything?
I haven't had a chance to review.
Okay, so I'm fine at this. Ben?
Not at this time.
Okay. Carl, I know you've mentioned you had a few things, so...
Oh, I mentioned a few things. I mean, it's, I think, starting off before I hit it with both barrels, it's going to be a great project for the town. I think it's going to satisfy a need for apartments as well as, as well as meet one of the goals of the master plan and the district in itself of having a town center area. So, I think it's going to be, turn out really great. Just a couple of things. I saw the interested agencies. You may want to include the Wapertown Creek watershed. And so, when you start looking at map, at laying out maps and stuff, I think it'd be nice to see the adjacent residences, you know, the ones that are really right up against the property line, so we see where those houses are located. That might be some. So, on page five, you know, talking about streetscape design, I guess some of the elements that might be nice in that core area would, you know, would be benches, trash receptacle, planters, whatever, some street trees, bike rack, the, maybe outdoor seating areas for restaurant, if there's restaurants in that core area, might be nice. I even thought of, you know, if, you know, if there's a lot of second-floor business, you know, a lot of people working there, might be, you know, a little plaza area where they could sit outside and work on their laptop or whatever versus, you know, a little fountain or something, but just, you know, gathering area for lunchtime. Overall, you know, with the connectivity, I'm going to, you know, I'd like to see connectivity to the surrounding neighbors, what kind of thing, you know, if anybody in another house can walk to the central core to go to a restaurant or something, that'd be great. And I think you've already approached on that, you know, trying to get some connectivity to Darryl Place there. And discussions about, I don't think there's projects to look at as far as traffic and other things, but the old Herman's site is not, nothing's going on there yet, but I don't know what, if you can even look at anything there. I think the Honda Parking is underway. I think you still have an unbuilt building on your Dill Val site. I don't know if that's in the consideration as well. You mentioned the Greenway connections. I think they're in many ways consistent anyway with the town master plan and the McDonald Heights zoning as far as human-scale lighting and walkable, et cetera. Thinking about visual impacts on page 10, you know, some of the, some of the surrounding areas are up on the hill, like the Lutheran Center, Darryl Place. I don't know what you have planned for, like HVAC and how the architecture will work into that, but as far as, that's one visual impact I thought of. If there's on-street trash bins, maybe it can be, you know, included a recycling bin as well, as mentioned in solid waste on 15. For traffic transportation, I think, you know, getting into the loop bus or something like that would be nice, the bus stop. That's about it. I'm not sure if you have a target group in mind for the things, such as millennials or whatever, but if there's families, how that affects the school. I know you mentioned the daycare, so school effects, I think, are in the scoping document. Police and fire, I think you got fairly close. You got the Rochedale Firehouse right nearby, and police aren't too far. Schools, you mentioned. I guess the only other thing I'd mention is construction. As far as, you know, I assume construction is going to be going on, multi-year project, so the hours of destruction, the noise, all that may change over time depending on when some people move in or not, and you're probably used to doing that with your, with the other large projects, but scope, look at that in the scope. A little construction. Talk about, oh, the air quality section, you know, landscaping trees in general help scrub the air anyway. One thing I did think of, we've run into some other projects, if there's restaurants, sometimes there's odors from the restaurant. You can put scrubbers on them, or it depends on the type of restaurant, of course, too, if it's wafting up the hill to other areas. And that's all I have for now.
Thanks, Carl. Peter?
I think it's a well-drafted document, and it gives us a good framework. I think we touched all the issues, and, you know, it's something that we can refer to, you know, as the process moves forward.
Refresh my memory, the build-out, how many years are you anticipating?
I think we've currently scheduled probably about five years, but a lot of that's market-dependent. You know, we don't want to build and have vacant properties there, so...
Okay. The second thing is I know that you mentioned that you're trying to have meetings and get ahold of the neighbors, and there are some neighbors that haven't responded, so I would encourage you to continue to do that, and I would encourage the neighbors, if anyone's listening, to, you know, accept your invitation to sit down and, you know, so they can voice their concerns and, so they can get their inputs to make this, you know, even better project. So, I know that's hard to do, but we're going to continue to try and do that.
Thank you, and we intend to. As a matter of fact, we have meetings with two separate neighbors tomorrow evening, so...
Oh, great. Okay, well, keep doing that, and maybe they'll spread the word and, you know, get everybody in, you know, in the same boat and going in the right direction, so that would be very positive. Carl forgot to mention charging stations for electric cars perhaps, or one. You know, electric cars are becoming more popular, even though the price of gas is down, so it's certainly a possibility. And that's about all I got at this point, so I think you're off to a very good start, and we look forward to the public hearing on the 22nd.
There's even electric bikes these days, so you can put a charger in with the electric bike rack, with the bike rack.
Yeah, 110 volts.
How many amps?
Thank you, Carl.
220?
How many amps?
35 amps. Okay, I had another toy. So, anything else? Counselor, anything from, you want to mention?
I was going to say, notice of hearing.
Pardon me?
Notice of hearing. Oh, you're going to do that?
So, I move the planning board adopt the attached resolution to issue a positive declaration to set a public scoping session in the matter of McDonald Heights Town Center. To move and second it, call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to read the resolution into the record. Town of Poughkeepsie Planning Board, P-U-G-H, but the O is okay. We lost the O.
Fix it.
Poughkeepsie. Okay. Resolution to issue a positive declaration to set a public scoping session in the matter of McDonald Heights Town Center. Whereas on January 25, 2016, the planning board of the Town of Poughkeepsie Board received an application for a site plan approval for the McDonald Heights Town Center project consisting of proposed mixed-use development including 288 to 350 dwelling, residential dwelling units in apartments and townhomes. Eighty-five thousand to one-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand square feet of mixed commercial development, recreation area, and associated parking lot. And whereas the town, the board determined that the project is a type-one action, and whereas pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEACRA, and corresponding regulations thereto, by resolution dated February 18, 2016, the board declared its intent to assume the role of lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the project, and whereas copies of the full Part I E, Environmental Assessment Form, EAF, and the application were circulated to identify the involved agencies on February 29, 2016. And whereas no objection to the board acting as the lead agency was received within 30 days of transmittal, and the board became the lead agency on March 29, 2016. And whereas the board has considered the full EIF Parts I, II, and III in the application as well as the criteria for determining the significance under SEACRA as set forth in 6 NYCRR 617.7 Sub C, and for the reasons set forth in the positive declaration form attached thereto and made part thereof, the board has determined that the project may include the potential for at least one significant adverse environmental impact if approved and built. And now therefore, it is resolved. The board hereby adopts the Part II and Part III of the EIF as prepared by the town's staff and examined by the board, copies of which are attached thereto and made part thereof. And the board hereby determines that the action may result in one or more potentially significant environmental, and hereby adopts and issues the positive declaration, notice of intent to prepare a draft EIS for the reasons set forth therein, a copy of which is attached thereto and made part thereof. And the board hereby adopts the draft scoping document dated August 16, 2016, attached thereto and made part thereof. And the board hereby sets Thursday, September 22, 2016, at 6:00 PM in the main meeting room of the town hall, at the town hall, on Over Rocker Road, Poughkeepsie, New York, as the date, time, and place for a public scoping session at which the board will receive public comment on the draft scoping documents. And town staff is directed to circulate the positive declaration form and draft scoping document to all involved and interested agencies, and to make available copies of the draft scoping document to the public pursuant to 6 NYCRR 617.8 Section Sub B, including posting the notices and draft scoping documents on the town website. Moved and seconded, we did the resolution. Call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. So, good to go. We're going to have a public hearing, and we're off on a comprehensive process to see if we can get this project come to fruition. So, good luck, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you very much. Appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you, everybody. Plan review number two, 33 Arlington Avenue Site Plan Review for Modifications of Use, Parking and Facade of an Existing Building, 33 Arlington Avenue, Zone BH Highway Business District, .52 acres, Wilbur J. Whitman Trustee Owner.
Good evening. Steven Tinkelman, Tinkelman Architecture.
Jason Littwick, Tinkelman Architecture.
Is that my little, is that one working?
Is this, yeah, looks better. One correction is that we're the owners, Built Parcel Five LLC is the owner rather than the Whitman family on that.
Okay, so noted. Built Parcel Five.
Thank you for having us tonight and for having a special meeting. We want to advance our project with you, and I guess the question to you is if you'd like a brief description again of the project since you saw it a couple of weeks ago.
Did anyone miss that meeting? I think you were in here.
I missed that meeting. I would appreciate it.
Yes, I think we should.
Okay.
Brief.
As mentioned last time, the project is an advancement in the eastward direction of the Van Wagner Place project that we're constructing. The project involves 33 Arlington Avenue. Do we have the aerial? As you can see in that, the dark yellow line, that's the structure that is part of this application. The idea of the project, again, is to turn the building inside out, and the back of the structure, which is facing west, towards the, what was the, the equipment yard for Rondad Electric, becomes the parking lot. So, this will become the parking lot. I'll go back to the plan in a second. This becomes a glass facade that we're breaking up for retail tenants, and so the building will be, it's about 10,500 square feet on the first floor, and there's about 3,000 square feet on the second floor. When we're done, it'll be a mixed-use building of office and retail uses. Parking for the building, again, is along this side. We've started to have discussions with the town, and we'll be back to you with more comprehensive plans for sidewalks and other ways of circulating for pedestrians and all that, so that we can create some more interactivity between all the buildings that we have either planned or going currently. The site plan is relatively simple at this point in time. This is all we're asking to be approved, and we appreciate the, you know, the posthaste that we've been going through with your board and with the zoning board, in that we have some tenants that want to move in. So, we're only committing to the use of, you know, three spaces. I mean, we're essentially using the building for warehouse purposes ourselves, and we have an office user of about 2,600 square feet and one retail user of about 1,500 square feet. So, we're creating a new parking lot here. We're also beginning to mine the opportunities. We've been meeting with different folks, including the Highway Super and Mr. Wilson, and about the idea of putting parking on the street, because there's adequate width to have parking on both sides. We think it'll be a nice opportunity to do that. We're also proposing to put some sidewalks, you know, on the, on this, which would be the north face of the building as well, which is anticipating some of the parking on the street and all that. So, this is really not a finished project, and it's kind of the way we worked with you when we first moved into our office five years ago, which is we said, look, we don't really know quite exactly what we're doing with this, but it's anticipating the master plan that, you know, that you have seen, so that what we're creating here will begin to develop into the larger project that we're anticipating. So, we appreciate, you know, you're accepting that. In the meantime, we're meeting all the standards that you would normally apply for this particular parking lot, you know, the, and such. You know, again, this is then becoming the street facade. The goal here is to make the intersection something completely dynamic, which it isn't right now, and, you know, this is the first step of doing that. Look of the building...
Steve, before you leave that...
I'm sorry.
Help me on the west side there, building third, whatever they are, labeled numbers 16 through 25. It's found, as you look at the print, at least on this one.
What is it?
These.
These and here?
Yeah.
Those are existing parking spaces now.
That's what they are.
Yeah.
Couldn't understand what they were. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and again, this building operated for 45 years as Rondad Electric. That was their parking, and this was their yard for, you know, equipment and spools of wire and things like that that were... So, we're re-striping that area on the east side of the building and cleaning that up. I think that there'll be some other improvements coming down the pipe once we figure out exactly how to put the on-street parking there and, you know, and how we want to curb it and things like that. So, there's a lot more discussion on it, so... But so for this, you know, action here, we're showing that there'll be, you know, these new spaces here. The town owns some of this green space. As part of our last project, we curbed it and then planted grass in there, and, you know, at some point in time, that'll be coming before you for landscaping, and we still have to have more discussions with the town board as to the ultimate use of that, that This is the image we showed you last time we were here. It's still evolving, but what we ended up doing is we're building a canopy that's along the west side. It does a couple of things. One is it creates some good shadowing, you know, for a glass wall, since that is west-facing. There's also issues with the way water comes off of that building, so we're able to control it better, both in the wintertime and, you know, in heavy rain and stuff like that. So, it does a couple of things. We're using the same kind of cabling system that we've employed in our existing office building. We're using the same kind of cabling system that we've employed, um, in our, our existing office building with some updates because of the way the stormwater is gonna be dealt with or the rainwater and that. This tower here, um, is still evolving, but it, uh, we're in front of the zoning board. It turns out that we're asking for the smallest variance in Town of Poughkeepsie history of about three inches. But the, what it is, is it's a pre-existing non-conforming, uh, corner of the building and we want to go up with it. And in order to do that, we're skinning a new face on the, on the building. So, it's a technical requirement which we're respectful of, but it's interesting to argue three inches in front of.
Very clever.
You know, it's like, but, um, so, in any case, part of this is because of, um, uh, the need to create a visual strike here when you're coming, uh, north on Van Wagner, you know, having a tall element that we can light, you know, and have signage on it and such, uh, becomes important. But there will be, um, you know, three or four different suites along this side. Again, we're only getting approval for one because of the timing issue, but again, I think we have the building full. So, um, you know, we'll be back, you know, sooner than later to, you know, complete the application and such.
Okay.
Thank you.
Arthur.
Yep?
Yeah, as we had, um, actually talked about at, uh, one of the prior meetings, uh, this is, um, sort of a, um, a, a project in evolution, uh, much as, as Steve pointed out, uh, some of the other things that, uh, we've looked at at Springside and, and Van Wagner. The, the driver for this is a, is a retail tenant who's expressed an interest in that, um, uh, that, that space on the, uh, the northwest corner, roughly where the, the tower is located. And, um, uh, so what you're actually looking at is, is a plan that gets them to that point where they have a space that they can, they can lease to, to a tenant. And there'll be other, obviously other tenant spaces there as well. But there's a, sort of a larger plan that, uh, we've been kind of talking about that, that, uh, involves the intersection. As, as Steve has pointed out, the area that was, that was curbed, um, actually to sort of create some separation between the, uh, the roadway and the house that, uh, actually encroaches on and over the, uh, the state highway, uh, or, sorry, the town, uh, right-of-way. Uh, but there are some other things that we've been also talking about involving potentially some of the other properties in, in this area. They're just not to the point to be able to bring them forward, uh, for a full site plan review. Upshot of which is you're, you're gonna see, um, uh, this plan back before you again at some future point in time, hopefully in the next couple of months, with some, uh, some changes to accommodate some additional, uh, development occurring on some of the lands around it. Or, or not, it may take longer than that, uh, it's a little hard to speculate. But at least this would get the, uh, the existing building fixed up, uh, and, and made ready and useful for new tenants. And, um, uh, so they're also here before you tonight for architectural approval. Uh, they still need the, uh, the board to act on SECRE tonight, uh, as well as the conditional site plan approval that would let them get back before the zoning board for, uh, the very minor variance, uh, which is actually being driven by the tower because of the existing, um, uh, encroachment of the, of the building. So, uh, staff recommends that the board, um, grant, take action on SECRE and, uh, grant conditional, uh, site plan approval per the, um, the staff report.
Thank you. Joe?
Yes, um, we did take a look at the plans and had several comments, they're fairly minor and I think it's a matter of the plan still evolving is why we saw there were some inconsistencies with different things that we're just kind of highlighting in our memo, so. But, uh, none of these are very, you know, insurmountable or anything, so, they, as long as we make our memo condition of the approval led to be fine.
That's fine. Thank you. Ed?
Joe, I assume you're referring to your hop days?
Yes.
Okay. That took care of me, thank you.
Rich?
Uh, I mean, I, it's, I mean, it's something that we really need to be done to clean up that, that area and I think the, the, uh, what you're doing is great. And, uh, look forward to seeing the further changes that you're gonna make as it proceeds.
Thank you. Thank you. Ted?
I think it's a great project, especially where it is, we were just at a ribbon cutting today. Doing this here, I think will make that, those apartments more attractive, because, you know, the whole area be cleaned up nice. It's good, I like it.
Thank you. Carl?
Uh, ditto, you know, the rusty chain link fence going away is gonna be a great thing and help your, uh, help your other projects. So, it's good to move it along and, and looking forward to seeing what you're coming back with, the sidewalk connections and the on-street parking.
Peter?
I think it's very clever. Uh, you've taken an industrial building and with a stroke of the pen, you have transformed it and the neighborhood. It's great.
Thank you.
Took the words out of my mouth, okay. Yeah, it's exactly, and you're gonna continue to do that through that neighborhood. Um, we were, a lot of us were at the ribbon cutting and the response was, you know, fantastic and I know that you, uh, immediately sold out the first floor of all those, sold out rented the first floor of all those apartments. So, I think, um, it's just a great thing for the neighborhood in this, in the town and you're showing a lot of vision, I think, I think that's great.
I know, gotta go back. Gotta go back that way. Rocco? Rocco?
I think it's a, uh, a, a great, uh, plan as is and I'm looking forward to that whole area somehow becoming all part of a, uh, a single, uh, vision there. A good start, thank you.
I guess we could call it kind of a transformation, right? I move the planning board as lead agency hereby determines that thirty-three Arlington Avenue's site plan would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be requi, uh, will not be required for the reasons set forth in a SECRE negative declaration for non-listed action dated August sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Second. Moved in second, call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, seven, zero. Adopt a conditional site plan. I move this, the planning board grant conditional site plan review approval for thirty-three Arlington Avenue, subject to the following, one through, where are we? Five, one through seven, and I added a six A for the town engineer's comments. That was, we, we forgot to put that on there, okay? That was the only addition I had and he, um, seven E will conduct an architectural review. Second. Moved in second, call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven, zero. Be prepared for architecture? Thank you.
So, basically what we're proposing to do is on the west side, we're going to knock out, um, a few of the bays of the CMU and add glass, um, aluminum storefront, add a canopy that goes the full length of the, uh, west side to help collect and divert the water that comes off the, the roof. And on the northwest corner, we're gonna propose a tower that is, give or take about twenty-five feet, which will match the roof line of the existing height of the building. Um, and as we mentioned before, we're still kind of working out the details of the material and how this will, um, you know, evolve in the end. And that, we're gonna put in, um, you know, a sidewalk for the full width, a six-foot wide sidewalk that will be the same depth as the overhang to protect the pedestrians and, and, uh, people that are entering the building. Along here, we showed on the site plan, there is going to be a sidewalk along the north side that'll also lead to the, um, the business entrance on the other side.
Okay. Now, will, it looks substantially different than what you're showing there, I mean, you're still working with the materials, but.
It's gonna have the same proportions.
Yeah, the, the one difference that we might do is the tower may be sheathed in kind of the corrugated metal that we've used on our office. Other than that, it's, it's really, um, cleaning up the building, taking a lot of the piping and, um, some of the cracking and, and reworking the, the masonry surface on that. So, it'll, it'll be a, it'll be a masonry surface that has a, a real heavy textured paint. We've used that on, on the building that we're in currently, so.
Correct.
It looks like it's an Ephesus finish, but you're really working with the masonry. So, uh, what, what Jay is talking about though is we'll have the aluminum, uh, storefronts in there. You know, we'll have light, some downlighting in the canopy that, you know, just, um, um, you know, to illuminate it at nighttime because again, it gets dark, you know, during shop hours and such. But a lot of it's really just taking the existing building and cleaning it up, you know, there's not a lot of new materials.
How old is the building?
Good question, it seems like it's from the forties, from the records that we've, we've seen.
There was no site plan around or anything, from what I read, I guess.
Yeah, the, uh, you know, we, we found, you know, that whole area is interesting because of the roadway system was very different when the highway wasn't in, but, uh, but I believe that the town actually used this for the highway department at one point in time before Rondad Electric, which might have been back in, in, you know, in the fifties or something like that.
Do you have to, like, reparge the whole building for the?
Yeah. Yeah, and so we're, we're, you know, again, part of this is we're gonna work our way around the building the same way you'll let us do that, you know, with where our office was, child abuse, um, came in, um, two years or so after we were in there, so that was left kind of in a rough spot, but, um, you know, as, um, we think this'll be more aggressive because of the fact that we have tenants that, you know, um, that wanna be here, so, um, my guess is that the next time that we're here, you'll see all the, the elevations, you know, changed and, and brought up to speeds.
I'm not sure the hours of tenant, I don't, I don't know if we discussed, uh, any kind of lighting in the parking area or is there that, something coming, lighting?
There, there's lighting in there now, we haven't, um, we, we have to work that out with engineering and with, uh, with Neil, uh, Wilson during the, you know, the next couple of weeks, because we're, the, part of it is we don't know how big this parking lot will get, so we wanna be careful about, you know, not making the right or wrong decisions, but we'll, we'll work something out and again, make sure that Morris Associates and everyone's comfortable with what we're doing on.
And that's, uh, the canopy's good to keep, uh, rain protection for people visiting stores as well.
And, and sun becomes equally as important, cause when you're facing a glass wall, you know, you can do an awful lot with coloring a glass and all that, but it's still, you know, needing, having a, a real strong, you know, passive covering like that is important.
West.
And once you come up with a final design, we get some render, I'll, I'll try and share with the board, whether it be email or whatever, just so everybody knows, you know, what it, what it's gonna be.
Yeah, we should actually, you, again, I think that the one, the only thing that you'll see evolve is the tower form, because it, you know, we actually have something that came out of the oven today and we just, um, so it's, it's evolutionary, but it's of the scale and all that, it's just, it's just getting it to, you know, work better with the rest of the building, so.
Okay.
That parking lot right there is gonna be item four?
Tempor, it's gonna end up being blacktopped, there's a catch basin that's already in there, so again, that's working out that detail.
I'm just thinking about all the glass in item four, stones flying.
Needs to be blacktopped, so.
Great, any other questions? Okay. I move that we accept the architecture as presented.
Second?
Moved in second, call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, seven, zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time.
Keep it going. Plan review at Duchess Golf, number three, Golchus Golf and Country Club amended site plan, site plan review for tree cutting, timing changes regarding improvements to add a three thousand twenty-four square foot ancillary clubhouse building, outdoor wedding function area, new ponds, landscaping, aesthetic lighting, and putting green renovate renovations. Twenty-six, twenty-eight South Road, zoned R-dash-two, a residence, single-family, two-acre district, one hundred and forty acres. Unlisted action Duchess Golf and Country Club owner.
Thank you very much for having us, uh, on the agenda tonight. This, um, this is about the clearing, of course, we got the SECRE approved with the clearing range, uh, limited between October first and March thirty-first. And our client asked us to see if we could reach out to the DEC and US Fish and Wildlife and see if they could, um, you know, allow us to do the clearing in the summer, so, I'm gonna have Chris kind of go through the point-by-point of that really quickly and then we can follow up with any questions that you might have.
Okay, so we, um, we submitted a request to have clearing occur in the summer and, uh, we submitted this request to both the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and the US Fish and Wildlife Service. They both have agreed to allow clearing after July thirty-first. And the US FWS requested an emergency survey to occur the night before the tree cutting. We've sent the planning board all the documentation that, uh, we received from the DEC and the US FWS. So, um, we just wanted to, uh, go over with you and, uh, hear out any comments you guys may have.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, uh, the real issue here is that the negative declaration that was adopted by the board a couple of months ago specifically had this cutting restriction in it. And, um, uh, the board is, uh, is in agreement tonight, uh, to basically accept the, um, uh, the, the judgment, if you will, of the DEC and the Fish and Wildlife Service, uh, to allow the cutting to proceed before, uh, the October start.
Yes, yeah, yeah, they, uh.
Then, um, uh, the, the resolution is one that would authorize the staff to amend the negative declaration so that it is consistent with the, the, uh, the new determination from the agencies.
Okay.
After July thirty-first?
After July thirty-first, right.
Yes, um, this, you know, it seems to be a straightforward request that they're asking, I did talk briefly with Larry this afternoon. These kinds of things are normally decided by Fish and Wildlife or DEC, so I would be comfortable deferring to that. The only question that just popped in my head was, um, I think the town now has some kind of tree removal ordinance, I don't know if that would kick in anything, or?
No, because the, um, uh, that, that ordinance actually covers, uh, tree removal in the absence of a subdivision or a site plan. We have a, an approved site plan, so we already know which trees are coming down, it's a matter of when.
Okay. All right, I have nothing else.
Great, thank you, Joe. Rich?
I have no comment.
Ben?
Oh, sir. Nothing.
Peter?
We have the documents from the DEC. So, I'm fine.
Rocco?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good.
Ed?
I just don't know how you, who's gonna be out there trying to see these black bats? That's, that's a tough job.
It's.
I try to watch them in my backyard, it's like.
Yeah. It's, it's limited to dusk, so. And that's the night before.
I'm just curious, do you use flashlights or anything, or just naked eye?
Sit there, right, naked eye, lawn chair.
You gonna be there?
I might be. I might be. I'm gonna be there with you.
Okay.
Rich, you wanna make a motion, or?
I move that the board authorize staff to file an amended negative declaration to eliminate the cutting restriction for the endangered bat species habitat for the proposed project.
Moved in seconded, that the board authorize staff to file an amended negative declaration to eliminate the cutting restriction for endangered bat species habitat for the proposed project. Call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven, zero. Thank you. Anything else that we need to discuss before we're?
That's all we got.
The meeting be terminated.
Yeah. Moved in seconded, meeting be terminated, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven, zero. Thank you all for coming out in August for a short meeting, appreciate it.
Thank you.